So I'd like to call the public hearing to order is seven o'clock. The purpose of the public hearing is to discuss application number twenty-three zero-two. Property of Robert Piedamo, Jr., forty-three, Aspen Mall Road in Andover. Application for a special permit to allow for the construction of a detached accessory apartment in accordance with section four point one-one in section twenty-three of the Andover zoning regulations. I don't recognize the three of you. I got you as the property owners from last time.
His wife, Janine.
Okay. And so I'm going to ask, because we don't have the setup online. We messes around and get the guests to sign their name.
We're having our only in-person event of the year. It's called the Sharing and Celebration Summit. There are four community units in the state of Connecticut that have done extraordinary work in aging dementia and disability. So we'll be sharing their stories. Lawmakers will be there. We're having students from the Greater Perth Academy of the Arts come and perform different musical selections. There'll be lunch. It should be a really fun.
Okay, so it's the iPad that was moved all up and back in here. You can get down.
Okay. So anyhow, I saw that we had posted online some new information. And if the contractor can give us an update of what you you've provided to us since the last meeting, I'd appreciate that. And then we'll we'll add questions. I don't think there is anybody in attendance here tonight outside of the commission that is looking to comment on your application. So given that, we'll just proceed with your presentation.
Okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Nicholas Sulek. My company is Woodcraft Designs. I'm a builder at Inverness, Connecticut, here to represent the DM models for the application that we're providing. What I've updated since the last meeting was the central sewage system exemption application, the approval that I received from that. Yeah, and I improved the prints. There was some confusion about dimensions and there were things that needed to be like the heating and cooling system, the finished ceiling height of the building. And just end up dimensional and the elevation so that it was just a little more clear for everyone. The other thing we did also is we added the missing information on the site plan. So we should go, I have two paper copies. I know my PDF is to.
Good. I will. I'm going to try and get the drawings up here so you can see this a little bit easier. Let's start at the bottom and we'll work, well, second from the bottom, the site plan revised.
Yes. Okay, so some of the information that was missing the last time was how we were going to provide power, how we were going to discharge the waste, and how we were going to supply water to the building. So that's shown and it's identified. We also needed to show some parking, some additional parking, so we removed four parking spaces. And they wanted to, or you wanted to show exactly where the tank was and how the system was laid out. We didn't have any information on the fields per se. The file is not complete, so there's no asko for the fields, but the fields are beyond the second tank, as you can see on the print. And I think that was, that was all.
Okay. Here's a quick back out of that and then we'll go to the updated drawing.
The Senate area and all sort of.
Yeah, yeah, I've got that.
Yep. So I think the only thing you added here is you put the heat pump on the outside.
Yeah, I showed that. I showed the finished ceiling height at eight feet. And I gave you the correct dimensions, the exterior, the outside dimension, which is twelve by one. The little mudroom, enclosed mudroom is six by six. That gives us the total square footage of three seventy-six. And I believe that was all that was that.
What color do we plan to have the?
You know, right now it's a, it's kind of a beige.
One of the few things we we have to ensure is the compatibility with the video right there. You know, didn't want it sure true.
We don't either.
Yep, okay, very good. And then as Stephen said, the approval from the Sanitarian is in there. I wasn't going to bring that up unless somebody wanted to see that.
I haven't written it.
And is there anything else you wanted to present to the commission with respect to tonight?
The application. No, I bet I'd be happy to feel some questions if anyone has any question.
Okay, at this point, I guess, do the property owners have anything that you'd like to add at this point?
No, I mean, we're just taking the existing. We're not going off, you know, get market anymore. We're doing this right order. It's not rental property. I mean, she's going to give me money, but that's different.
Okay. Jim, I saw that you added the checklist online this afternoon. In your mind, is the application complete and does it meet our requirements there?
I believe it is, yes. The only thing that I didn't address, I didn't go back, is lighting. We did speak, I did speak briefly about it with the applicant. And what we've done to pass is just add a condition. And any lighting being accordance with the zoning regs. I don't recall it being like added to the plan.
But on the front door, that's an offset on my part, the front door gets a light every exterior door has to have a light by code. So, you know, we'll probably have an overhead light in the mudroom. We'll have a wall light coming into the front door and possibly a floodlight as you come up the driveway, a motion floodlight. I need to discuss that with the owner.
Because a part of the garage is not going to be the door, the side, the grass properties where the door.
Yeah, as you're coming up the driveway, you're going to be looking at the left overage.
Any commission members have any comments or questions?
They have to be two means of egress from it. I mean, most times, most houses that don't have two doors or fire and so on.
Yeah, that's.
Window you said or whatever.
That's my thought, that the windows should be egress.
Are they large enough?
The sizes are three oh by five six, so that means egress. I had to run that. Some of these things that have been on by the buildings that there any questions? And I know we doesn't get this, so after all, this is done, they get that far, so.
Any other questions from the commission? Okay, I have no other questions too. So at this point, do any of the commission members feel there is a need to hold the public hearing open any longer? Or are we ready to close the public hearing?
I don't know if it's a public hearing. Did we ever determine whether the mudroom needed to be conditioned space or what in terms of power?
Our rigs don't really address that. You may have seen, if you had a chance to read the draft chain, because like what what, you know, what is an architectural plan? And that's when, after we left the last meeting, I went up and worked on that for a little bit because that seemed to be the key to what we had to specify that in architectural plan. And all the definitions that I found were very vague. And so I thought most of those issues would probably go back to be the building official, you know, to make sure that it's done the code. So I did not. I looked at it. If there was nothing in our regulations that required it to be conditioned, if I were to build this thing, I probably wouldn't condition the mudroom either. I have one that's not conditioned right now. And so I said, that's okay. That's how I came through that for doing the question.
And it needs to square footage?
It just there. With the mudroom and again, the, there were. We're kind of getting into the deliberation a little bit, but we're trying to make, figure out whether or not we can close the hearing. The two things came into play, the we have a square footage requirement in our regulations today, which he needs. Our, our regulation doesn't specify whether it needs to be net square footage or gross square footage. And it might make a difference if we did, but we didn't specify that. We just said square footage. And I think I'm pretty confident that the minimum square footage requirement is no longer legal anyhow. And so if this plan would have, initially, I thought I was going to have to go out and change the regulation before we get out of this hearing because I want to get rid of that, but they added the mudroom on there. They got it up to the current conditions, our regulations as they stand today, and so we need that. But certainly if we disapproved it because of the size, they would have, you know, they'd have had the ability to go appeal and win that. And so I was happy that the square footage met our requirement. I didn't have to bury through a change to regulation before they got there. I think mudroom's a nice addition to it. I think that worked out well. And that's how I came through this where footage.
Initially, the plan came in before, before the application is two hundred and forty square feet because they're working with a ten by twenty-four foot building. And I pointed out the two fifty requirement. And if you look in section twenty-three, the definitions, they give you a few hints on how to bump that up, a covered porch, for instance. And I mean, they did this for two reasons. I think one is any regulations, but also they wanted a little extra space to, we wanted the design feature of mudroom particular or a cap entry. I think that's what helped present it.
Any other questions from any of the commission members?
Where did you end up landing with the hundred amp service?
I did at one, they are taxi at two hundred.
So two hundred amp at all of us right now?
Yes, yeah, totally. He said it's sending high part of the.
Yeah, I was going to say that there would be really, really type of a meanslet at a hundred amp.
Thanks, Kevin. Any other questions or comments from the commission? Do any of the commission members have any concerns about closing the public hearing at this time? Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing. It's tied seven fifteen. And at seven fifteen, we will open the regular meeting, the planning and zoning commission. The roll call and seating of alternates. Leanne, are you with us?
Yes.
Okay, so I will, I will seat you as a regular member. You can see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, I discovered just, excuse me, in the course of getting ready for the meeting that there was a link shown. And this obviously is what I called in on, so I was prepared to go out the door if I couldn't get through. But I can hear you and I can see the material that's being put on the screen.
Good. So you're welcome to give us your feedback on how it works in your end. And we'll go from there. So we have the full regular commission tonight. Anne Pramay, Scott Pousan, Steve Nelson, Leanne Uttenson, and myself. So none of the alternates, although all three alternates are present, none of them will be seated. Additions and changes to the agenda, I would like to propose two changes to the agenda, and I'd like to add new item, new business five B, a pre-application conference for the senior community center. And then under old business, I would like to change old business fifty, which is an update on the senior community center. I wanted to get that up so that we got it earlier in the program so people didn't have to stick around any longer than they wanted to with that to have a discussion on the draft accessory dwelling unit changes. And then we'll renumber current new business five B, the boundary agreement. Item that'll now be five C. So I made a motion to approve those three changes. Thank you, Scott. Any discussion on that? Hearing done, I'll call for a vote. Anne Pramay? Scott? Steve? Leanne?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so that motion passes by zero zero. Any members of the public have any comments before we start the discussion tonight? Seeing done, we'll go on to the first item of new business, application twenty-three dash oh-two. The application of Robert Piedamo, forty-three, Aspen Mall Drive, seeking a special permit to allow detached accessories according to section four point eleven to the Andover zoning regulations. At this point, our zoning agent said that we thought the application was complete and met the requirements. We had a couple of items of discussion in the public hearing, but any other questions or comments on the application at this point? Hearing done. I'll make a motion to approve application twenty-three oh-two for accessory dwelling unit. Steve? Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing done, I'll call for a vote. Anne Pramay? Scott? Steve? Leanne?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The motion passes five zero zero. You're all set.
Thank you very much, folks. We appreciate it and the comments on to us so far. Yeah, night evening.
Okay, next up is item five B, the senior community center, pre-application conference.
Okay, folks, most of you probably know me, I would hope by now. I made about ten of these, so some of you will have to chair my call. Anybody need a copy? I've got one more left. Sorry. I apologize for not giving the mapping to this commission earlier. Got this from the surveyor today at about four. And I had a quick set of notes, also secondary is regarding the town hall's parking regulations. But I think that's one of the things we're going to kind of focus on. All right, so real quick, we're the town will probably be a month or so away from a full-blown application for the community center. But there are a few questions that I would like to discuss with the commission because I want to make sure we're on the same, you know, page regarding the application prior to. So let me just bring up the. Okay, so the first item I want to talk about is parking because that's been one of the things that's been pretty contentious. This is an aerial shot that shows the fire department, the existing town hall, and the Andover Elementary School. So there's a couple of things. Right now, currently designated for fire department only, there are twelve spots. The town hall has thirty-eight spots. And over elementary school has a hundred and two in the lower parking lot and thirty-eight in the upper parking lot. So between those three entities, there's a hundred and ninety-one spaces. I've been watching, you know, during most daytime operations, you know, we tend to be running, you know, at most fifty cars collectively between the town, the fire department, and the school. So we're at less than a third of the normal capacity for parking. So today I took a snapshot at ten AM. There were thirty-nine cars parked in the AES parking lot, twelve total at town hall, one car for fire department. And so again, fifty-one today, which is about a twenty-six percent utilization rate. So your parking regulations are section twelve. And there's going to be a couple of things we need to talk about. The first is you, the regulations have a matrix that allows for minimum and maximum level of parking by type of usage. Unfortunately, a lot of the types of usage we have don't really match up to what's in your regulations. So what I've attempted to do is, you know, pick the category that is closest to what is required. So I also wanted to talk a little bit about usage patterns. So the Andover Volunteer Fire Department has about thirty-five active members. When you look at their parking utilization, generally their heaviest parking utilization is Wednesday night for their, their drills and their training sessions. And there've been up to twenty cars here for Wednesday nights. Usually there's a few less than that. But assume roughly twenty cars during the peak fire department time. The town hall, in their ordinary conditions, there's typically up to eight employees working here at any given time and one to five members of the public. So our load on this building, you know, tends to be fifteen vehicles or less. There's also senior transportation vehicles stored. And we have three vehicles for senior transportation. And at any given time, there may be a driver that just showed up and parked her own. So you can say, on average, right now, you can anticipate up to four vehicles parking here for senior transportation. So if you look at what, what we're going to want to do is consider this overall as a shared parking situation because the reality is the town hall and the fire department share parking and the town hall and the school share parking. And when there's big events at one versus the other, we all use our cross parking. So we are effectively now, we have shared parking. So we're not planning on, you know, changing that. So when we look at the regulations and how they specify each each use, there's no real use in your, in the regs for establishing parking for a fire department. So I assumed one spot for every two members. Okay, which would be seventeen total parking spots for the fire department. In the town hall, the closest category in the list would be, as far as I could tell, would be a professional office building, which is two to five spaces per thousand square feet, which nets out somewhere between thirteen and thirty-one vehicles for the town hall. The community center, again, the closest thing I could find in there would be an indoor recreational facility, which is two to ten per thousand square feet. So given the size of the community center that requires between five and twenty-five spaces, there's no category for public schools, but there is for private schools. And if you look, and that is based on the max capacity for the, the building in terms of students. So if you look at the max capacity, that says the school should have somewhere between fifty-four and a hundred and seven parking spots. So currently they have one forty-one. So the school has quite a bit in excess of what your regulations allow for maximum parking. In other words, if they were building that today, you would have required them to put in a much smaller lot. And that kind of makes sense because I've looked a few times and on average, there's less than forty cars in that lot out of a hundred and forty-one. So it's definitely underutilized. So where are we in terms of total parking? If you look at the combined uses in your regulations for the fire department, the town hall, the community center, and the school, you come up with a minimum, if you take the minimum for each of those categories of sixty-nine spot and a maximum of a hundred and eighty. And since you have a hundred and ninety-one available, I think to me, there's a pretty good evidence that there's sufficient parking and that that should be a non-issue. And the second question that was raised is can the town hall qualify for parking without, you know, you said the school is something completely separate? So the answer is if you take the requirements for the fire department and the town hall and the school and you accept the minimum levels, the minimum required for those three occupations would be thirty-five spots. And between the town hall and the fire department, there are either fifty or fifty-one depending on how you. So regardless of whether you include the school parking or not, we should still qualify at minimum parking levels. If we include the school, we're actually over the maximum parking. So my suggestion would be that the commission allow the application go through without any additional parking because we've got plenty of parking combined between the three. So that's the first one is parking. And then what I'd like to do is take you all through the then that. Then map. So obviously, you can see that. Leanne, I assume you cannot see that, correct?
I don't think so.
Hey, Eric, if you just put on the screen and say share, I'll show, sure, if you put on the screen, or if you put on the individual and say share.
So go to the share itself? The screen itself?
Yeah, screen you're on before. Resume screen. Is the button down, Bob, or is it the share?
Don't worry.
All right, blue.
Right, but the, the problem is that, oh, that is the one I wanted to share. Okay, I'll shut up now. Thank you. Okay, so am I looking at the right one? No, but we'll start with this one. Okay, so this one is not the full survey, uh, which is what I want to start with. So let's see if I can. You know what, screw it, let's talk about that one. This one is the details of the basic plan for the community center. So to orient you right now, we are sitting, uh, right here in the Andover Town Hall, in the community room. So the proposed building location is directly behind this building and turned at about a forty-five degree angle. And the angle of the building is determined by essentially optimizing it for solar south. So the, the main axis of the building faces solar south. So what you see is the intention to use the main entrance as the town hall, as the entrance also to the community center. A turning circle that is large enough to take emergency vehicles. You can see the driveway right here that goes to the existing Andover Elementary School garage. And this also feeds to a semi-established dirt, uh, or gravel path that is the access way to the lower playgrounds for the school. Um, and also at location to at least one of the oil tanks for the school. So that will be maintained, uh, during construction. Okay, if you look up here, where I'm indicating right here, that is the current leach field. This is a combined leach field for the town hall and for the fire department currently. The community center will be added to this building. Uh, if you can see, there's, this is a, this trench goes both directions. Um, and then there's a second trench line here with a second distribution box. So the intention is to just fit out the fourth leg of this. So the, the septic, the additional capacity for the septic system will go there. And then directly behind that is enough room for a reserve system. If it turns out, you know, at some point in future, we have an issue with the existing system, that gives you a, a reserve or repair area for the system. So about two weeks ago, uh, the, um, the engineer along with Eastern Highlands Health District and the town crew, uh, dug a deep pit test there. Um, the modeling level was more than four feet deep. And they went down to seven feet without hitting ledge and no sign of active water, so that was very positive. And the, there was also two part tests. Now, I take it back, one part test complete, completed. Um, and it matched exactly the values that they got in nineteen ninety, which is saying the soil conditions haven't really changed. Uh, so the system should be approved as designed. Um, talking to the sanitary, he was pretty convinced that there wasn't gonna be any problems with that. We do show on the map a future pickleball court. That was a request from several individuals that, uh, pickleball is gonna be a thing, and you better anticipate being able to hook the courts back there. So this is a location of, uh, what could go in the future. Just saying that there's technically room there to put in two courts without interfering with the septic system. We're not intending to put them in right now. The reason they're shown as separate and not combined courts is because of the grade there. The one court will be, have to be about three and a half feet lower than the other court. So each one of them will need its own individual fencing. Little more expensive way to build it, but it's a lot cheaper than bringing in a, a lot of gravel. Uh, the community garden will be located between the shed here and the edge of the pickleball court. Uh, right about where I'm indicating right there. That way, they can use rainwater off of both sheds. Um, and it's still proximate to the parking area, so it's easy to get at. Um, that will, Public Works will bring in additional fill. Um, but it won't interfere with the existing system, because, you know, we're not getting close enough to, to the actual leach field, that we need to worry about bringing septic sand or anything like that. Uh, so. Before I go any further, does anybody here have any questions about this portion and/or the parking?
Are there gonna be any changes, um, based on handicap parking requirements?
So. There's gonna be a few things. If you notice, right here, there's two additional spots for handicap parking that will be installed right in there. And then we also had one request for somebody who has, uh, is, is not in wheelchair, but only has the ability to walk very short distances. So we did put in one additional van accessible handicap spot. You know, basically as close to the door as it was humanly possible. So there'll be one super close parking handicap spot, and then two more additional ones just for the community center, which is what's, what's code required. Um, what's not on this map, which will be added, is your regulations do require us to, uh, make accommodations for bicycle parking, which is a wonderful thing in a community center anyway. So we have to figure out how many spots we need. We do have four at the front of the town hall. But I would anticipate as part of this, and we have more spots at the school, but I would anticipate we'll put additional, uh, bicycle parking somewhere, uh, right by the front door to the community center, uh, to meet section twelve point seven of your regs. Um, the one, one of the things I wanted to ask the commission is for relief for the section in your regulations that requires a, uh, for. You don't have community uses directly listed out in your regulations, but most industrial business and things of that nature require a dedicated loading spot. Um, and I would ask whether the commission would consider waiving that for this application. So, and the reason is, the, the main floor only has one main door. There is a side door here, but it's not really great for loading. So most things that come in here that require loading would come around the circle, park right there, and then have direct sidewalk access into the front. Uh, so what I would propose is that you as a commission allow us to get away with not having a dedicated loading spot. Um, because if we, we have sufficient parking that we could do it, you know, it's, it's not an issue, but there's no clean place on this map to designate a spot for parking without taking up one of the two handicap parking spots down there, which I would very much like not to do. So when we come to the application, I don't know whether, and, and I don't expect your, you know, a definitive answer tonight. But does anybody on the commission, would anybody be opposed to us submitting a waiver for the requirement uh, for a loading space?
There'd be some sorry, maybe, um, temporary stopping there for loading and unloading kind of thing. Um, because that's a spot where you would not tend to have as much arc. Temporary type thing.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the, that, that's obviously gonna be where the, you know, like when senior transportation drops off the seniors, they'll park right along that sidewalk so they can have direct grant access down to the sidewalk. Um, but that's not gonna be strict for parking in any way, shape, or form. In fact, we probably wanna, I mean, we really don't want anybody parking there for any kind of duration, because that will be the fire lane access to that facility also.
Maybe we put, we put signs of violation.
Yeah, that, that makes total sense. Yeah, yeah, that's perfect.
There's a car south there, it's big bus, loading number, can another vehicle get through in that circle? Is there a, I can't tell.
A car, yes. Fire department, not a car.
Yeah, it's not a width issue. It's a, a long vehicle requires a much greater turning radius there than, you know, even, even a large bus, school bus certainly wouldn't get through there if somebody was parked there.
We would need to put that loading, unloading past the center point so that if somebody can be around, they have enough room to reset.
Right.
If it was two rounds, nobody would get along, totally see it, push it back.
Yeah. Concur. Other questions regarding that? Does anybody in the commission have any general questions on the application, what they're seeing, what their concerns are?
In the setbacks for requirements, uh, they're all met by the location of the building on there?
Yeah, the, the reality is the town owns all the properties, so, I mean, that was a question I asked Mark Branch directly. And he essentially said that the, you know, as a town, you can set those property boundaries anywhere you want, because technically it is all, all town property. Um, so, yeah, there's nothing, there's, the, the closest anything comes to that would be a true property line. Be the, the easement for the gas line, and nothing we're doing is other than the, other than the pickleball court, and that's far enough away that I don't think that's an issue either. So no, there should not be any issues with side yard setbacks. Um, the one that the town would consider, and again, it depends on how the commission feels, um, this piece of property right here, there is, I'm gonna show you the other string. Or. There's an existing deed line that's right here. Um, this parcel that the town hall was on was originally cut out at exactly one acre, well, not even one acre, was cut out at exactly forty thousand square feet, because that was the minimum allowed under zoning regs in the back area, which was deeded to the town at the same time, was technically a separate parcel. Um, so the, the question that we struggled with is does that back parcel, uh, it does not touch any town road, therefore, is it, you know, is it a legal parcel? So, I mean, we can get rid of that deed line, we just file a new deed description if these two parcels merge, if that's a concern by the commission. Um, again, you know, Mark Branch said you can essentially ignore it, because it's all town property and you can set the line any way you want. But I recognize that, uh, depending on how you read the regs, that may not be the interpretation you get to. And we would be happy to file this with a new deed line, um, that shows that we moved in the two parts, parcel moved. Now, the other thing we have been considering, and this isn't something that has a, uh, you know, a final, uh, decision, this, you know, presumably will still, will end up being the blocking point between the town and the school, is one of the concerns was, was to make it cleaner, to cleanly separate what is town property and under town authority, and what is school property and under school authority. Um, so one of the things we are talking about doing is essentially drawing the boundary line, moving it over by dropping a single pin. This would move about point one acres of land and transfer it between the school and the town, uh, essentially, but that would give, that would basically put the entire proposed driveway in the town portion and leave everything else in the school. So it, it does not affect any of the school parking. Um, it doesn't affect any of that, doesn't affect any of your egress. Um, you know, it's, we're talking about somewhere just under four thousand square feet of land. So we're, we're talking about a pretty small piece. That's not final, that's, but that is one, you know, one option. Um, you know, I, I think we can clearly do this and apply without it, but I do think that makes things cleaner, um, and makes it easier to understand who's responsible for what. Uh, we had also talked for a while about officially merging the school and, uh, fire, uh, department properties. Um, initially, the surveyor had some concerns, because the septic system, uh, for the fire department was not on the parcel attached to that. So we asked that question to the zoning attorney also. And he said it doesn't really matter as far as the law. You know, i- if by virtue of the fact that this parcel has, contains the septic fields for this building, this building, the proposed building, and the school, it is de facto a merged parcel anyway. So he said we can safely, uh, ignore that. Um, you know, so given that, there's no reason to, to kind of merge these two parcels. Might as, might as well just keep it, keep it simple, so we don't have to write any more deed descriptions than we have to.
And just regarding, although they're all the same parcel, they are separate, so we're sorry to their.
There are two septic systems on the property. There is a large system that is located right here, that is the school system. And there's an additional portion to that, and that is right here. Uh, at one point, the, the last two sets of trenches had filled in and stopped functioning. So they built an additional capacity, uh, off to the side here. Um, but the last time that got dug up, when we looked in the, in the distribution boxes, there was no evidence that any apple had ever flown into it. So this portion of the system for the school, as does not appear to have ever been, been used, even though it's physically there in the ground. Uh, the town's combined system is right here. Uh, and this is fed already from two different spots. The town has a septic tank right here, uh, that feeds into the, the first distribution box here, and then gets split to the second distribution box. And the fire department system actually enters the field on this. And the fire department system actually enters the field on this end of the first trench. Because their capacity is currently low. So they were allowed at the time to just, instead of trenching all the way over and putting everything in, in the central distribution box. So this part's not gonna change, this part's not gonna change. What will change is there will be an additional septic tank. For the town hall, the direction of the community center. And that will go into the central D box. And then this leg, the fourth leg, will be completed. Um, and that should be the septic system for this. Because this septic system will now cover three separate buildings with three different uses. This does require not just the Eastern Highlands Health District approval, but it does require uh, state approval also. Which I talked to our senator in bed, he thought that was not an issue, that um. He didn't have any concerns with that, and thought the state would not also. But just so that you know, that, that will take both those approvals uh, before we're allowed to build it. Okay.
Which the little deed line that's uh, you know, the dotted thing that goes through the border with the school there?
All right, so. This gets back to when Endover Elementary School was first built here in the late forties. This was the original boundary right here. Of the school property, that land was deeded to the town from a previous first selectman, a guy named Percy Cook. Well, if you walk back there, you might notice the, the trail is named after him. So he initially deeded this in like forty six. The school was built in nineteen forty seven. And then the town deeded the land back to Percy Cook. And then Percy Cook then deeded the town a bigger outline. Uh, and deeded them more land, so this outer boundary right there was the second. Uh, version of him giving land to the town. And it increased this from, you know, like five point eight acres to, to somewhere around ten acres. Um, and that all occurred at, you know, basically in one shot. It was a little weird because you see all the stuff for the town, basically quick claiming it back to Percy. And then Percy quick claimed a different deed description back to the town hall at one time, so it took a while to, to get that. But does that answer your question here? Okay. Now, I just have. Okay, and this is one I would have preferred to have shown first, but couldn't find it. So this is the overall boundary survey, uh, which goes all of the parcels. This is the fire complex right here. This is the town hall complex right here. Um, and this is all of uh, the Endover Elementary School. And this again shows that initial uh, survey boundary by Percy Cook. You can pretty much ignore this one, um, this is just on there because it's. A bunch of things in the past referred to it, so, so the surveyor showed that um, on the mapping. So the reason I wanted to talk to you guys a little bit about this. Is this is something that will. Uh, prior to us filing this, will require us to do an eight twenty four. Application with the zoning commission. And the reason why is that if you look at the boundary between the school and the Hawes. Property, there, our surveyor thinks the last surveyor that did this got the boundary wrong. Um, not a lot, in this area right here, it's off somewhere around five feet. Um, and then there's, this has been drawn, this little triangle there or square. Um. You know, was also identified as there's a difference between the written deed and the actual survey data from the last surveyor. So what would have to happen is the surveyor basically said there's enough difference between those points. They can't do something to A two level of accuracy, because there's, there's too many conflicting. You know, prior survey and boundary. You know, uh, boundaries there. So their suggestion is that we do a boundary line agreement with the Hawes family. In this area right there, we're talking, you know. A pretty small amount, you know, two hundred feet times about five feet wide. So, you know, something about a thousand square feet of difference between there. And then this little triangle right there, which is, you know, give or take four thousand square feet. So there's somewhere about five thousand square feet, um, you know, one point three acres difference between the two surveys. So. So, but it's not anything that affects school or school operations. So in the interest of having a clean survey, um, I would recommend that we. Uh, you know, at some point we'll officially do an eight twenty four. Application, um, you know, and if you guys approve it, then we would go ahead and file this. Um, I did tell the superintendent that this was coming, but I didn't have the mapping, I will share the mapping with them. And, you know, Gary, if you guys have any feedback on that, you know, feel free. But I don't believe this in any way affects your operations, and obviously we gotta get the Hawes family to agree to it also. But it just makes it, you know, once the boundary line agreement is in place, then forevermore, you know, it's pinned and you know where it is. So that's, uh, that's where we are regarding this survey.
Is it currently pending?
Uh, as far as I know, it is not. Um.
You wrote the question, I didn't hear that.
Said, is it currently pending?
No, I don't, don't think so, at least the mapping doesn't show it.
Still going to open there.
Yeah, and there's rebar in the fence line there. So in, in, when you look at the old maps, old mapping. Sometimes has this drawn here, and sometimes has it's drawn there. Um, you know, I don't think there's any. You know, that, that's one of the unfortunate things surveyors have to do, is wait through all the old stuff and try to figure out what the original intention was. And uh. You know, in the original mapping for this was pretty crude that the same was done at the beginning. Um, other questions at this point? Or comments or concerns by the commissioner? Anybody in the audience have questions or comments or concerns?
Did the neighbors have their lot surveyed? Did the, uh, the people that are next to, you know, with that boundary question, had they had their property surveyed, that ever matched up or?
Yeah, there is a survey for the Hawes property. Um, and that does not match completely the anchor engineering survey. I think this survey matches closer to what the, the survey and the deed description for that property was. Um, there is apparently an existing easement to drain from the school property onto the Hawes property. Um, but that will not be affected or changed by this um, application. Um, I, I don't think they're gonna complain, they're gonna get a few thousand square feet more land, they're not gonna get anything that's practical usable, but. But it, it should not negatively affect them in any way. So I don't see any reason why they would, uh, I have not talked to both of them, I have not shown them the mapping yet. But I have had a verbal discussion with Kim Hawes and said that, you know, the town will be coming even at some point to do this. So. Questions?
Now, I think, so the, the drawing shows the gazebo is on the school property, has there been any feedback? From the school on whether they would like to uh. Get rid of that, or they're happy with that, one way or another, I think that was a little bit of a surprise.
Um. It actually wasn't that much of a surprise, because if, if you look at the old GIS data, that's kind of what it showed all along. I know everybody I talked to told me they were sure that the line went straight down the gazebo, half on school property and half on town property. Um, you know, but when we asked you to survey, that's clearly not the case. I mean, obviously the town has been maintaining gazebo. And the electrical outlets and power for the gazebo comes from the town hall, not the school. Um, as long as the school doesn't have any objection to that, you know, that can, that can stay. Um. You know, I know the school board was offered a possibility of adjusting the lot line, which would have put that. Under town control, not school control, and I think the school board wasn't overly excited about that proposal.
Okay.
So that's not incorporated in this. Other questions? All right, have a little luck, we'll see a full-blown application uh, next month. Um, I will be doing that presentation that'll be engineered from BSC.
Thank you.
No problem.
Did the people that are here from the public get the opportunity to sign a little sign-in sheet so we know for our minutes? Who's here? Thank you. Um. That concludes. Item five Bravo. The next item up is just for. A very preliminary. Run through a discussion regarding a different boundary agreement, possibly twenty four referral for. But portion of the property owned by Stephen King on Burnet Brook Road. That's probably better, I was gonna bring up the GIS map, which we know is wrong, but uh.
And so what you're looking at right here is the. The town owns a large piece of property which the transfer station is on. Um, the town has access to it up at several locations. Um, but one of the sides of that property, a bunch of property owned by Mr. King. And that's another one of those cases where there seems to be kind of pretty complete disagreement. As to between the deeds and the, the mapping that was filed. Um, as to where the boundary lines are. So that's another case for the town, at some point it's going to have to do a lot line agreement with the homeowner on where the boundaries are. So I'm gonna show you a portion of the property to orient you. This line, like running my, my cursor down, that is Burnet Brook. This road right here is Burnet Brook. Uh, growth. Um, so. In this part of the survey up to here, there's pretty good agreement about where the boundary. Based on all the deed descriptions, and there are new survey, newer surveys for subdivision in this area. For this. Point right there is fairly well established. Um, and then if you look at the other end of this survey. Which is right here, so to orient you, this is the Hop River Rail Trail. And right here where the road is, is where that little gravel parking area is at Burnet Brook. Now that parking area is partially on DEP property. And it is partially privately owned by the owner that has this whole parcel. So what the town would like to do is the town would like to in acquire. That section of Burnet Brook, the frontage to that along the road. And the reason is that probably one of the prettiest spots in town along the Hop River Rail Trail. It's that big rapid section, it also encompasses the stone bridge where the rail trail goes under. And there's also a walking path that leads down the water. Um, and it's something that, you know, people are common with, even though it's not private property. Um, so what I had told the homeowner in. To go back many years, I negotiated a couple of times with the previous owner of this property. To see whether he would either sell or grant the town easement to that, because I think this is. This is nice enough. That, and that's really kind of one of the landmarks along the trail, that the town should really own that. Um, now, the homeowner is amenable to giving that to the town as part of a boundary line. You know, agreement, um, in part because he doesn't want the liability to it, because there's an awful lot of, you know. Uh, members of the public dropping over what's currently his property. Um, but he doesn't really want to put up signs or restrict it either. So by putting that under town control. You know, essentially alleviates any uh, liability portion from him, so he's happy to do that. And then the question is where this boundary goes. Um, I spent a couple hours this afternoon looking through all the mapping. Um, and he's right, I certainly can't figure it out. Um, so their surveyor, Rob Hellstrom, um, made a, a. So this, this portion here is bounded by the road, so that one's very obvious. This portion here, there's good survey data from the old railroad, so this is well established. And based on the deed descriptions, this distance matches what's in the deed description. This distance matches what's in the deed description, and so does this distance. Um, but what doesn't match is the angles they report don't really match. Um. You know, so this angle is probably off. Uh, and it doesn't match between the respective deeds and previous surveys. None of which were really A two surveys, they were all, you know, pretty low resolution surveys. So at some point. There's going to need to be a boundary line agreement between the town and the owner of this property. To establish where that is, because it looks like right now there's not enough. Uh, there's not enough good data to definitively say where they intended to put that. So this will also require an eight twenty four, as will the. Uh, acquisition of this property. So when our surveyor reviews this and gets back to us, it will probably go to the zoning attorney for review. Um, and then at some point it will come back to you as a commission for the twenty four. Uh, you know, referral. Now. You might ask, why do we care? Um. The Burnet Brook is one of, one of only a couple of cold water streams in the town of Endover. And because of that, there's a two hundred foot upland review area. Um, along the stream instead of just a hundred feet like for a normal, uh, for a lot of other things. So the reality is, the, the land that's in question that we're debating about, is it all in the upland review area and it's probably not buildable anyway? Um, so regardless of whether we own it or the town owns it, it's probably not gonna have to deal with any development pressure. So essentially all we're trying. So essentially, all we're trying to do is get the boundary about where it should be. Questions on that?
I don't think. I don't know exactly how the property owner got started. On trying to figure out where his property was. The first time he brought it in. At least. To the best of his ability, understanding where the property. Line went was right through the pasture that he had behind his house fenced in here. So he had fenced in spot that's uh. You know, pointed out to just as you get to the bend there. And the property line went right through that little fenced in area. And he was trying to sort out. What's really there? And and he came, you know, forward in a very positive uh. Manner, done a lot of work trying to sort out where the property line really is. But he certainly had his fenced in pasture on the wrong side of the line for many, many years now, and and he's trying to make it right. And so I think. It's one of these places where there could be a win win answer for both the property owner and the company.
Yeah, and if you read through the actual documentation of this. Even if this went straight here, that would not match the deed descriptions anyway. So the deed descriptions don't match anything existing on the ground right now. So it's I I think the only practical way to sort this out is to come up with some kind of agreement between the two of us. And whether that green is a straight line that goes from here. Or whether, you know, that it comes to some point here, you know, that's. That I don't think anybody's, we're not at the point where we're we're there yet. I mean, obviously, he would prefer it not to go straight because that cuts off part of his pasture. You know. Out of the stockade area.
And I looked at the GIS line drawing that a and it's. Shows the property line a lot closer to the road than than any of these discussions do. They get the property lines. Almost entirely on the roadside of the river. And so. That's probably not accurate either. That didn't match anything, so.
Right.
The important thing is that we, uh, you know, come to an agreement on where the property line should be and then make it so and uh. Eric's trying to figure out the most cost effective way of uh.
Right.
Going out to do, is that north and south line or? Is that on any deed?
This line?
Down on any deed anywhere?
No, actually, if you read the deed description from this corner or from wherever this establishes. You know. They don't match. One of them actually has it going northwest. A hundred and sixty feet to some point there and going, which would put basically this entire parcel. On town property, but it also has this parcel. This property extending way over on the other side of the road. And them owning a whole batch of land back here, which isn't correct either. So. I mean. Hard to tell what the original.
So the reason that north and south line is on, you know, this is what what reason is that up here?
I mean, this line right here. So when they, this boundary runs straight in this direction. Um, and there's a random iron pin there. Um, so they picked that and said, okay, if we ran it straight there, that would avoid it going through there. Um, is that correct? Maybe not. I mean, I'm not sure we're ever gonna piece together what the original intentions. And where the quote unquote true boundaries are. You know, I mean, like if you think back to uh. The parcel that got sold. Uh, that the town granted the easement to. Um, but over the riverside. What's the name of the owner of that? Uh, Vicki was one of them. Um, when they went and actually surveyed that property after they bought it. I mean, that property went from seventy six acres to fifty two after they actually surveyed it. Um, you know, when they pursued and finally got a boundary line agreement. So, you know, we're only talking acre, well, a few acres, so it's not a huge disagreement. But but I don't know that we'll ever get an exact.
That north and south line is established by those residents. Western. All those are residences, right?
This is the town line. These are various different, these are lots. This was a subdivision from around nineteen ninety. And these properties extend all the way back to Wales Road. Um, so yeah, I think these are, is probably accurate enough. Modern enough survey mapping to say this portion is correct. You know, and this line is correct. It's just a question where this boundary intercepts that line. That is not really set in stone at this point.
At this point, that's that's the recommendation of the property owner. That's where he, you know, he's ready to set the boundary there.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, and and the town could very easily, you know, say, okay, we don't think that's correct. Well, you know, we think that's correct, but I mean, remember too, we're getting. You know, even if we are giving up a few acres of its land. What we're getting out of it is the most scenic section. Of Burnet Brook and we're getting that under town control. So from my perspective, there's a lot to be gained by that. Um, you know, and we're not giving up anything that's buildable. Because, I mean, as as many of you know, this this that interior portion of this property was one of the ones that. That has always historically been under consideration for higher density housing. Or, you know, affordable housing in some form or another. But again, I don't think this would limit that because nothing we're talking about is uh outside the two hundred foot. Uh, you know, upland review area.
So the lab here tonight, we wanted to show you what's coming down the plate and uh. They're out there trying to make the property lines better.
Yep.
Whenever we start looking at property lines, it's always the can of worms. And so the town benefits by having a well aligned property line out there, you know, do anything.
Yeah, and and we have to accept the fact that the town property is not surveyed either. Um, so there is some ambiguity of what the town actually owns there. Um, and the good news from my perspective is the northernmost edge of that property. Is well defined by the the old railroad, so that's easy. The part to the east. Because there's all been subsequent development. The town boundary along that whole side along Shawty Mills well established. By individual subdivisions, lots that are cut out. So this is the last portion of that that's really not defined. So even if we don't survey the property ourselves. We will, with the with the boundary line agreement on that portion, we will have basically uh. You know, enclosed all four sides of that property, so you should know pretty accurately where.
Okay, that completes new business. Well, I got one more. I didn't renumber it, but it now is by Delta. A discussion on monumentation of subdivision lines. And we had a discussion at the last meeting about uh some some pins and monuments that were. Missing over in the Pine Ridge Drive subdivision. And uh. So I went back and and we looked at the, it's in the subdivision rigs. Which if this was a subdivision, but it would apply to uh any site plan. Uh, because our regulations provide that latitude. But it talks about, you know, iron pins shall be installed in all lot corners. The commission shall require the installation of such monuments, iron pins. Is a condition of approval of the subdivision or pre-subdivision. The building permit shall not be issued until required by invitation of corner pins are. So, you know, I talked to to Jim about that a little bit. We we should have had those pins uh in place out there before they got a building permit. I don't. Know that there's been, you know, as as much as I would like. Coordination between the the building official and the zoning enforcement officer. But we're gonna try and improve that a little bit so that that we can, you know, get that kind of stuff. Take care and and get that put in part of the process. And the other thing that that I discovered, you know, reading through here is. In in uh. I'll let Jim tell me where I run amok here, but it it talks about. Uh, on section twenty one dash four under enforcement for the building permits. No building permit shall be issued for any activity which is not in conformance with provision of these regulations. So how does a building official know whether or not he's in conformance with our regulations here? It says no such permit shall be issued until the zoning enforcement officer is issued a certificate of zoning compliance. Indicating that the plan submitted to the building official conformed to these regulations. So that's, I think, how the process goes. Jim, correct me if I'm wrong. Yeah, so the uh that that process hasn't been. Going on. I don't know if every building permit takes a certificate of zoning compliance or not. Certainly, what I'm looking for, you know, help on in this case is. For those those cases where a nutrient allocation worksheet would be required around Andover Lake or something like that. You know, that the building official shouldn't be issuing a building permit. Till he checks with Jim and Jim can say, oh, that takes a nutrient allocation worksheet and provides that backup or any other. Conditions of approval that we might put into our approval there that that provides that link. So that's something we've got to work on to strengthen up a little bit there, but but our process, as it's written in the book. Seems to work pretty well. We just haven't been as maybe as good as we should have been on the follow up.
It's true. A lot of kids were installed. After. Prior to um, the time that the asphalt was done. But. As we pointed out, we, that's the way the regulations read, is the way the regulations read, I will. Make sure that that's compliance.
So in the past. The zoning agent has often weaved. And allowed them to pin it after uh as a condition of getting a CO. Not as a condition of issuing the building permit. And the reason is on a small lot, you're doing site work. It's very easy to run over and wreck the pins, you know, and then nobody ever goes in and puts them back. So it's better to force the surveyor to come back out after, you know, do asphalt to the building correctly. Pin the lot and then give you a map and a set of asphalt. That's what's done. Doesn't have to be done.
Well, makes sense. I got no background in any of this stuff, so all I do is read our our regs and that's what I found by doing it. We'll try and get the pins in there, unless there's a good reason not to. You know, come back and do that. And and I still. There's still a fair amount of frustration that we we put out a plan. And then we don't actually follow the plan all that well. And and that's something that I'll continue to try and get better at. So. That's that's all I want to say on monumentation, unless anybody else had any questions on that one. Okay, we're gonna move on to old business. First up is uh an update on the gravel pit. Jim, you got that?
Sure. Uh. I believe that the gravel pit is slated for. Hanging seating this week. And. Planting on the. South side, uh, where we're alone in Huxton property, um. Which is a concern of uh tanks, you know, with respect to the turtles. Also, some of the steel fences coming down to allow turtles to move more freely. I did go out there with. Wetters aid and tank with some concerns about the ability of that site to hold hold seed. Given the the vastness of it, the the wind and and perhaps uh. Water migration. And I hope to meet with. The owner this week, send him a letter and call him up. Hopefully, we'll be meeting this week and going over in detail. It's also an issue that was raised, um. Catherine Hutchinson has probably all recall has repeatedly expressed a concern about water. Going onto her property. Uh, so the final plan, I say the final plan, the asphalt. Uh, it's not particularly legible on on the. On the website, and so we can't move it up. So there is a small portion of the property that does. Drain towards what I call the hollow, which is the road along. Between the properties and that that road is is. In order to to regrade there, that would be filling in floodway. So something that's not gonna happen. I'm gonna have to revisit that whole. Issue because it will come back, the matter will come back to the commission. After maybe, I'd like to have that. And resolve resolving, understand why. Why the owner did not grade it. All towards the back. Um, we're gonna have to take another look at the plan and have another conversation. That's all I really have.
Was there any topsoil on that side?
Topsoil, it's lacking in the back. That's been pointed out, lacking towards the. Towards the the hill, towards the. Hill that was carved out. And that's. Pointed out to him, gonna be able, it has to be able to take seed. The rest of the topsoil that's that was on site was spread on the on the front portion. Actually, if you walk the site, you can check to see how. You can, you literally can feel the the difference. You know, you have to look at it. It's sand on the back. So we'll see how that is is where that we'll have to see, have to have to support see. We'll we'll see if it does.
So one of the things. That I felt. I didn't do very well in this particular case. Is that. We repeatedly. And I guess Jim shares some of the field in here with me, but we repeatedly asked for a restoration plan. And we kept not getting anything in writing from the property owner or the engineer. And so Jim had sent several letters that way, nothing comes back. And so. Pinning down the property owner is what he actually agreed to has been very difficult. And so. We need to do better on that going forward is make sure that we actually get a written plan so that we can go back to it and say. That you didn't do this, because as we already said, even if we have a written plan. The chances of the the person doing the work that could follow it. We don't always hit the hit what we should then, so those are a couple of things. I don't like being in a position where we put out a good plan and then we ignore it and nobody follows it, that kind of stuff. And frustrates all of us a little bit on that.
Could you go back and we're gonna do the recordings from the meetings if we're going. Was presented as a restoration plan?
Well, I I just, you know, got the the. We we probably could. It's not really easy to do. Takes takes a lot of time. And uh. We're all limited on the amount of time there is. I thought we were gonna get, and and we're not far off, but you know, I thought we were gonna come out with a. Good conclusion at the end, and we probably still will. But the the lesson learned is when we tell somebody to submit us a plan. It's gotta be a, the plan has gotta be in writing, so you go back and look at it. So that's that's it. We'll be better, you know. That's that's a process issue and one of the things that we as a commission need to do when we have. when we approve something, and I thought hard about this with the accessory dwelling today, what conditions of approval? We're always in a hurry to get done with the thing. And what we need to do is develop the discipline that when, before we leave a topic, we say, okay, here are all the conditions of approval, make sure that they're in the minutes, so we can go back to the minutes, and that's our, our deck. What we should have done last meeting on the accessory apartment was we had a bunch of actions, they were all over the gell there. We should have taken ten minutes at the end of that and said, okay, let's go get the actions out here. Now, with my notes from the last agenda where I've written them, writing them down, I think they, they did in fact cover everything we were looking for. But we, we need to work so that the minutes are, are bread and butter as far as what we expect other people to do. And then we just get the minutes out, notice that you did this, yes or no? And that saves us all a lot of working tomorrow. That's what I'm learning and I'm always in a hurry to get done on time, all that stuff. We gotta take a little bit more to make life easier later on. I did wanna spend just a couple of minutes on the draft accessory dwelling unit changes. And Eric, do you think you could go to our website and, Jim, did you get those posted under the?
They should be right with the, the application.
Pending.
On here somewhere?
I would have thought.
I think it was the second and third.
Accessory apartments, this guy?
Yes.
Okay.
There we go.
I didn't actually see it. I, you know, it was kind enough to post it.
Well, Ian, are you able to see that?
Uh, what is this that you're trying to show now?
Okay, I'm trying to show the draft change to the accessory unit apar-, uh, accessory apartment, uh, regulations.
Oh, okay. I had a question on the gravel pit before you moved on.
Okay, have you got the accessory apartments, you're seeing it now?
Yes, I am. Um, can I still ask a question about the gravel pit?
Oh, go ahead, yep.
Yes, um, based on what you said tonight, and you know, we all know this has been going on for a very long time. Can we have something in place? Cause you know, this does seem to be stagnating. Can we have something in place from the land use attorney if nothing has changed by our meeting next month? And also, it's, it doesn't seem reasonable to think that any grass would have grown in the timeframe that they, they planted it over what would have, what was our winter. So I think that just kind of adds to it. So can we have something in place? Or maybe have the, um, if we don't have the land use attorney maybe present at the next meeting?
We will try. I can't guarantee that we will have somebody here. I'm, you know, if, I would like to get the, the property owner and the engineer both here. We have been unsuccessful at doing that and not making that a big enough issue. And if I get them here, I would like to have attorney grants here as well. So we're, we're shooting to try to do that for the next meeting to wrap that up.
Yes, that's what I was getting at. Okay, good. Thanks.
Okay, um.
Hope a lot changes for the better between now and then.
Yes. And, and I will try, so, and I will try to have the next meeting to be the hybrid variety, because I know Mark Rantz doesn't like going out after dark. And he just assumed we logged in from home and that sort of thing too. So, uh, we'll, we'll try to make that for the, the next meeting here.
Okay, yeah, I think that would help us make some progress that has really stalled. Um, and, and then, yes, thank you. And then to move on, yes, I can see what you posted about the accessory apartment.
Okay, I'm gonna go through this quickly. There's only one thing that I changed since we talked about this before. But again, back, you know, in the, in the intent thing there, if you provide for the needs of the elderly, we cross that out because, uh, while that was the intention when we first put these regs in here, you know, it, it's now the intention to this be an affordable housing solution for people that are just starting out. So we just got rid of those words. Um, moving down to paragraph four eleven dash point two. The, the intent here was to make everything by site plan review. So I added where the attached principal dwelling uh, in there, because that follows the guidance from the state, you know. As we saw from all the public interest in the accessory apartment for tonight, I think that's gonna be the case with most of them. And, and we should just try to make that easier and go through site plan review. The next one, looking down just a little bit there, we, we talked about, yeah, Eric, I'm gonna have to spool down. My finger works out of mouse and out of the pad very well. Okay, thank you, that'll do it. So, we had an accessory apartment that didn't meet the size of the lot requirement of our, you know, section eleven point two, and we did not allow that. Based on, you know, the knowledge now that we, we cannot make a minimum size on a house, and also that the state wanted us to have have it a matter of right that anybody could put an accessory apartment on any lot. Uh, I got rid of, what I did is I said the setback requirements of section eleven point two are satisfied. And so, you know, we should still meet the setback requirements, but if the lot is smaller than sixty thousand square feet, got rid of that requirement. Moving down to, to B, we talked about the net floor area, you know, no larger than one thousand square feet consistent with the state. And no larger than thirty-three percent of the gross for the net floor area, the single family dwelling. Net floor areas defined in section twenty-four. And that all lines us up with, with the state would say in there. They have no minimum. They have no minimum. Correct.
There is technically a minimum imposed by the state building code uh, because there is a minimal habitable area, uh, forest leaping area. So there's not no minimum, but it's pretty small. It's, you know, in order of a hundred and twenty square feet, something like that. So just to let you know.
Okay. The change that I made that you hadn't seen before is in item D here. And I put, uh, you know, the, the principal dwelling and accessory apartment shall remain under common ownership. And I added the words, and the owner shall reside in either the principal dwelling or the accessory apartment. And when we first put these regulations into effect, you know, we were talking about having uh, the, the person in the accessory apartment had to be a family member. And we said, well, what happens when that person dies? We spent all this money making this thing. When we get it, so we made it so that uh, it could, it could be rented out for, you know, uh, affordable housing and that kind of thing. And in that, we lost maybe the, the thought that we liked having the owner reside on the property. And we're putting, you know, two, two dwellings now on a single lot. Having the owner live there, uh, probably adds a level of oversight before it gets to the town's business, uh, maybe keeping things under control. And so I put those words in there, that's a little different. Uh, Jim thinks we had talked about that one time before. I couldn't remember if we had or not. But I was interested to make feedback if you think we're going too much. That is not in the example that the state gave us for doing. They don't say anything about that. But I do think that it's nice to have, uh, you know, you, you're not having one person owning two rental properties on a, on a single lot. It, it helps keep, uh, the good neighbors good. Any, anybody got any thoughts on that one or the other?
I agree. I mean, if you have two rental properties on the same property, you're essentially a apartment complex at that point, aren't you?
Yep. And, and the town is gonna be the receiver of all the, uh, complaints. It would be nice to have the property owner putting his degree of, you know, at least trying to maintain some semblance of decorum and, uh, doing that. So, okay, uh, you know. I leave that in there. That doesn't mean it's a done deal, you know, where it's on point. You know, after tonight, I plan to send these over to Mark Rantz, let him take a cut on it. And then we'll, we'll see what is coming up next. He's spool that a little further there.
Yeah, I would get that reviewed by him. Good, we got it at that. I just questioned whether that's the default. Not that I disagree with it.
Okay, yeah, that's good. So again, we had some discussion last meeting about, you know, what, what should the architectural plans require? You know, should we, we talked about the electric, should we talk about insulation, all this kind of stuff? And I, and I thought about that a lot, and I said, that's really the building official's thing. It's gotta be made to code. You know, and so we'll, we'll check with the building official on that to see where, where he comes down on that. But I can't imagine it not having to be built to code if somebody's gonna be living there. But, uh, and I took the words from the, the detached dwelling, put it up here. It says the architectural plan shall be submitted as part of the site plan review, and this is from our existing regs, to determine that the proposed structure is consistent and apparent to the character of this rowing building. And does not detract from the rural characteristics of the area. So that's really all we're trying, in my mind, that's what we're trying to do from the architectural drawings, is make sure that, you know, it's not some funky looking building that, that doesn't tie in with the rest of the neighborhood and that sort of thing.
Can I make one point though?
Yep.
This is under site plan review. So you can ask for architectural plans.
I can.
But unless you have some kind of design standard, you can't reject them because you don't like their architectural plans. You, you put if it was a special permanent. But how do you reject a site plan if it meets code or if it meets?
Code.
Yeah.
What one would look at would be architectural elevation is determined, it's compliance, if it, if it's in accordance with the neighborhood. If it blends with the neighbors. But there are some, there are a few requirements in regulations that would, that do require a fourth plan. I mean, you have to have sanitary, certainly.
We've got a kitchen and a bathroom.
Right.
And a living space.
Yes.
So.
And, and that's, that's listed in here.
It's in one of those things that talks about that, that's gotta have living area, sanitary, and kitchen.
But I guess my point is that if you're talking about, if your set of detached structure now is only site plan review, yet you think you're gonna review their architectural and reject something just because you don't like their architectural, you don't have a good leg to stand on.
Okay. No, that's, that true, I'll.
For a site plan review.
I'll consider that.
Yep.
I, uh, good point. Thank you. Cause we've got it down there. It's such a good point that we made it twice. It's in F and I as well, about consistency with the character. It's all through our, our zoning regs.
Right.
Yeah. So, uh, we can try. But anyhow, there you go. And, and it thought, I think that gets to the end there. But I did wanna put a definition in our definition section about what architectural drawings would be. Need to spool down there to the bottom of the, the three definitions, uh.
Is this?
Yeah, a little more, because it says the proposed architectural plan definition for our regs.
Will it keep scrolling down?
Yeah, a little bit. There we go. That's good. Architectural plans in architectural building engineering, a floor plan is a technical drawing with scale showing a view from above the relationship between rooms, spaces, traffic patterns, and other physical features at one level of the structure. Conventions are usually drawn between the walls to specify room sizes and wall lengths. Floor plans may also include details of the features like sinks, water meters, furnaces, et cetera. Floor plans may include notes for construction to specify finishes, construction methods, or symbols for electrical items. So that's, you know, taking a look at a couple, I, I know I put a couple of the things I thought we were looking for, and so that would be my recommendation for what we would define architectural plan and put that into our section on definition.
I think that definitely inspired the floor plan, which Jim mentioned elevations. Well, we're gonna review the aesthetics. We should call out elevation in there as well.
Okay, I can add that to it. Yeah. So anyhow, that's, that's all I wanted to go through tonight on the accessory apartment regulation. If you have any other comments on, on those, Ian?
See, you crossed off four point eleven point three, the whole section. What was the reason? Does that mean special permits?
That is correct. Yeah. The, the goal was to eliminate any requirements that have a special permit for accessory dwellings. And so outside of the lake area, it's, it's a matter of right for, for anybody to have a, that one point.
One possible interpretation.
Parking spaces, it's still in there. You got, you have two for the main home and one for the accessory apartment.
Yeah, what if the principal dwelling has like three thousand square feet and they put one thousand square foot out? Three bedrooms, one space, is that enough?
It is. Now, they might wanna put two, but it's gotta have at least one. That's, that's where. That is, yeah. Matter of fact, they reduced the number of parking spaces when they put out their guidance, you know, two years ago. There used to be two for the accessory apartment. Yep.
You're talking public.
In fact, that's what they said. You can't ask for more than that.
Now, they think and put it in, but we can't, we can't specify between the party that more than, more than three.
We guys had a debate about whether you require permanent foundations for these structures?
We have not had that debate. And, and one of the things that, that, you know, I, uh, well, we, we, well, it, I.
Just gonna check down.
I gotta get ahold of the building guy to see, does a house need to be on a foundation? And the, you know, so we, we said this is more like a house with a shed. And, and I'm sure fodder farms is going to be big time as well as a bunch of other people into making sheds that get turned into accessory apartments. And so my, uh, my thought was is you get ready for the, the meeting tonight. So when somebody comes and, and they have a shed, put on the, the gravel, the rock pile, uh, is that okay? And I didn't know the answer to that. I, yeah. I don't, I don't like it. You know, I think we need to require a foundation. But, but I gotta find out if that's something the building official was, or we need to put in an act.
Yeah, does it chip the cloud that variety on this group time?
It is, honestly. Yeah.
No pounding here.
Uh, well, I'm okay with it being that, as long as it's anchored, no problem.
Probably got it.
Yeah. Yeah.
That could be something the building official requires.
On what?
Frost wall protection on the, on the garage.
This is a house. We bought one.
Yeah.
It's not a garage.
It's already up.
Excuse me?
There's gonna be empty garage.
We forgot about it.
Oh, yeah.
You ever talked about.
You can turn a garage into a house. There's no frost protection.
It's fairly common to have a garage area made into a part of the house, so I've seen that in a lot of many, so.
Yeah, and I'm not smart enough, yeah, I don't know what the frost protections, the differences are. My conclusion was that we need a foundation, whatever that is, and I don't know how you define a foundation. Like, lots of places where they had houses on slabs, it just wasn't here in New England, so I don't know.
Some of these tiny homes, they don't have trunks.
Well, and and that's, um, yes, so that's the technical detail I need to come through is uh. The uh, accessory apartment on the uh, on the rock bed.
Or on wheels.
On wheels, they they can be, yeah, so.
Yeah. This guy's a bull one for you, about thirty grand, wrote in your backyard.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, there, it it's a complex issue, and obviously every state deals with it. Uh, differently, I mean, there are a lot of pre manufactured, what they call granny pods or medipods. That you can buy and put on and fully assemble, you know, the question becomes, how is that different than somebody wants to park an extra trailer? And there are, let somebody live there.
They limit the usage, you have the length of usage on that, I think, there.
Uh, I don't know, I don't know.
I got more work to do on that, that one just, you know, cause I was thinking about the, you know, the nice shed getting pulled in and upgraded and the comment there, right? And and I got smart enough on the foundation requirements here, but my thought was, the building official should require a foundation. And if not, we'll go ahead and add more of this.
Well, but do you consider, I mean, there's a lot of possibilities. I mean, one, you could just do a slab, and they do a thickening, so they dig down four feet on the edge, and they pour a, you know, a amount of floor.
Called a hunch wall.
Right. Bunch of different names for it, but basically essentially it gets you your. Your frost wall built into the slab.
Yeah.
Uh, you can also do a slab that sits on top of a sufficiently thick stack of foam. Um, and do an insulated slab, um, without going down four feet, there's a lot of. And I don't know how the Connecticut building codes, like a lot of northern areas. You know, it's more common to use the insulated.
Yeah.
Slab on grade foundations. Um, you'd have to see what what is allowed, but I would be, you know, the the good thing about it is the smaller the house gets. The less critical, because, you know, if you have a really big building, settling in one side versus the other shows up and causes you a lot of problems. If you have a twelve by twenty structure. Little settling on one side, it won't be that big a deal. Um, it can be doubled. Those are my thoughts.
Okay. Anyhow, that's where we are on that, and I want to get through those because we dealt with the accessory views tonight. Um, next item up is the approval of the minutes from twenty March twenty twenty four. And I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minute from twenty March twenty twenty.
Second. The applicant's name is.
Okay, well, I just meant, so we've got Leanne seconding the motion, and now we're having discussion, and go ahead, Anne.
Um, five B, the applicant's last name was, um, like, three fifty, fifty eight, yeah.
Okay.
There's a couple of mispronouns that I've given. Two of them, real. But requires, thanks, just for reference, if you can. And then.
Any other comments from anybody there? The only other comment that I had was on page three, just before we got the correspondence. That has four zero one, Steve Nelson obtained, we need to say the motion passed. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none, a call to approve the minutes as amended. Ian?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Leanne?
Hi.
I vote I as well, moving to pass it five zero zero. Correspondents here?
None.
Okay, that's good. Zoning agents enforcement action pending applications.
Six six four route six, Barnett Property, longstanding. Light violation, junk violation, um, and inhabitation of a, the habitation of a, an RV. I've been working, spent a lot of time with, well, with the town attorney on this. And hopefully we're, well. Hopefully, we finally leave. Things against the property, well, to reflect. Files everything levy for both, well. For the, for the blight as well as. This is pending zoning violation, I'm working with Mark Grant on the zoning violation that has yet to be pursued. Uh, zoning violation specifically on the, for junk on the property. Uh, in this, in addition to blight. There, a long time, very time consuming project. See some, some progress from an enforcement standpoint, progress meeting, um. Actual orders issued, and such, fines being levied. Uh, there's been some progress in charge. Jumping over with, for ten minutes. Um, and the, was, the health department did shut down the house, meaning, um. Parked the house, and it's no longer being occupied. That has to resolve, their issues have to resolve before it is occupied. Motorhome, as far as I know, is still being used, I'm working on that, again, with, uh, Mark Grant's. Um, two point three Long Hill Road will let property. How, back from the road, roof has been off of it, been on the market, I have not pursued it because I, um. Didn't know too much about it, it has not sold, what? I'm going to issue a. An order to an outstate owner on that. And hopefully we'll, if it's, if we can on that. Three forty four, six Mills property next to the library, this is the fence that's been disarrayed for a present time. Um, I have been in contact with the owner, he has assured me he's purchased material. And we'll be working on this, hopefully, any day now, Leanne can take care of it in April, um. And I, I had heard from, rather recently, okay, he's on the case. Um, twenty seven Hendy Road, a lot of light. It's a house under construction, been under construction for a long time, um, I have. Mentioned it to the owner, not issuing an order, waiting for him to be the first CEO, um, I, more recently, I have contacted him. Tried to point some issues out to him, but right now I have, um. Previous conditions with CEO, he has to address, there's some light conditions there. Forty-three times farm. Have a, an RV that's being residing in, has been for a long time, um, the owner has assured me that as soon as campground's open. The RV will be moved off site. I have not gone back to take a look at that in the last few weeks. That's all I have, we have to answer your questions.
That, the new house on Hendy, did they put pins in there, Jim? Pins? When you do the CEO inspection?
I will, yeah, I did not, that, I did not issue, I did not, don't, it's not here when that started, it started back in two thousand and eighteen. He doesn't issue, he doesn't, I I don't. I don't know the status of that, as far as, I mean, that wasn't subdivision, that lot's been there for a long time, but nonetheless, yeah, I will verify that.
They cleaned up the property in Long Hill, driven across.
Oh, I haven't, I forgot that one. I actually haven't seen it, I saw the dumpster outside.
Which is better, waiting to find this thing up, that it is.
A lot better than it was.
The most generous part, they tore the whole dumpster. And they bring you to show up, feel better, they're clean, dirt, and, they're building, yeah, cut rough, running around.
It it was a project that was undertaken by by a partnership and, which has since been dissolved, or at least, um. There's, so there's one owner that I think will be focusing on that, and hopefully he'll, he will be on site, you know, he will have a presence there, um. Hopefully, it's not gonna, same thing isn't gonna happen.
I didn't know that you had been. In the town, watching, and, for me, it's gonna be better, but, um. I know, I knew you was cleaning it up, because they decided that you weren't going to finish decorating it, and it was pretty on the market. As well, that was why.
I think it became a little more of a problem for them to, to stay in the. And slow down, block up, and, and, hopefully it'll be back.
Any other questions for June? Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission liaison, we had no meeting this month, so nothing to report. If somebody on the planning and zoning commission wants to be the liaison within Wetlands. I would be happy to entertain shifting to their responsibilities there, maybe to be a voting member all the time on Inland Wetlands applications.
And it can be an alternate.
And it can be an alternate, that's how, I I started out over there as an alternate, and uh. So if you're interested, let me know. Um, item ten, public comment, any, any public comments at this point? Just to you.
The mess on, um, twenty seventh Hendy. There are animals down by the road, there's, on the road, there were animals, and the other day I saw a piece of equipment. A excavator, not a big one, small, I remember the name, we were digging something. And, um, there's another. Healthy unit on that property, besides, with a new house that's been built. And junk all over this place, built. Even though the building that is going up. Is a tractor, it seems well built, so safe in the net.
Yeah, I agree.
And some of them just is, there are the kind of pollution entering the hot river on that thing.
Is that house being rented, Jim?
Not yet.
No, it's a small house, and.
The small house is obviously listed. I've seen one car there, yeah.
Yeah, I was sure it wasn't, I I don't doubt that. It is, I I was also told that the the owner. Purchased a piece of commercial property, and moved a lot of this equipment outside, hopefully that, but I'll follow up on that, on that. The outbuilding that.
Their parents was owned by Sabrina Cool.
Years ago, yeah.
Years ago, and they sold it, someone bought it, and just used it as a dumping hat. And there was nobody living on it, but now, her new building was on it, and Sabrina owners. Owned it, it's occupied again, there are cars a couple of.
That was an office, you remember that? Jim, it was an office for the agency concrete.
Oh, I don't remember that. But I've been down there a lot, I've been down there a lot.
Are you allowed to have two entrances on your election?
And how I've been down in the root city, I see white.
Yeah, we are conceivably applying to the special department.
That is good, that would quite a lot. Yeah.
There's, there's like one or two sheds, or like a huge, or what's the other thing, a spending like. It feels like a building, but it's just very, very small, it's new. It's gone a little less here, it's in there, yeah.
I think a portion of it's new.
But I thought it was a separate building in the back, that's leaving them.
It's a building. And and I do recall that one is.
You have, it's a different, and there is another separate one there.
Yeah, a couple, yeah, yeah, the one that, I believe the one that. I don't think is, is serving as a residence, was re, half of it was re. But one was re-built, specifically, not formal. Women's habitation, I do, cause I.
Go, Tim.
You have to get them out on the road.
I had two, I did.
Well, that comment made me think, one other.
Go, Jim, folks in Miami. You're not alone.
Well, it's not always, yes.
Home occupation application for Merritt Valley Road?
I have been in contact with the gentleman, who hasn't been in.
He came, he came in one day, and I was leaving, leaving, and I just passed him. Okay.
So I'll chase her down.
Yeah. We owe it to, you know, his neighbor to.
Yes.
Get that adjudicated, okay, any other comments from the public? Just here.
Chairman, I just like to say, on behalf of the board of education, providing us with that time to be and. To hear our presentation and be updated on where we're at and where we're going.
Well, I thought you might be interested.
I, I thank you for taking the last, and I would thank you for the presentation.
For what?
You're appreciated, and.
Um, any other public comment? Okay.
That's in here with Eric.
Next meeting, um, the the agenda says May fifteenth, I was gonna be out of town then, so we moved it, it's on the, it's on the schedule for May twenty second. And.
It is, we signed up a regular meeting schedule, but it wasn't where that, hey? Which is fine.
Now, my question for the commission here is, looking ahead. To the July meeting, I'll probably start shifting to that third Tuesday, like we had discussed, is it's the start of the new year. The the June meeting is currently scheduled from Monday to twenty sixth. Uh, I guess I'm inclined to leave it there, we can shift that to the third Tuesday and start that earlier. If anybody feared significantly one way or the other. But if not, we'll just stick with the schedule until July and ship to, uh, the the third Tuesday. Okay, you're done, stay with the schedule as it currently is. Miscellaneous, um. Mr. Marina is here tonight doing her minutes. Carol Ann sent the last meeting, resigned. And, uh, so Marina's gonna be helping us out with the minutes going forward, hopefully for a long time.
I don't mind.
Any other miscellaneous topics that we should talk about? Leanne, how'd it work from your end up there?
Um, quite well, thank you for, um, sharing the screen a couple of times when I apparently wouldn't otherwise have been able to see it.
Were you able to hear everybody, I know a couple of the people sitting in the back in room weren't always talking as loud as I would hope, um. Did you make it out okay?
Yes, um, sometimes the, the, that room, even when, for those of you there in person. The acoustics have never been good, and it's been known for that for years, but I feel like I was able to do quite well over the phone.
Okay, thank you, Leanne, um, any other miscellaneous topics? Okay, last item's adjournment, we make the motion, we adjourn, nine ten. Got second, any opposed? It's unanimous, five zero zero, thank you all for.